Yeah, somewhat shorter agenda than typical tonight. So, our, the next item on our agenda is to ask if there are any comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda.
Yes.
Can you identify yourself?
Yeah, Sheldon Katz.
Okay.
Hi Sheldon.
So, I'm here tonight on behalf of members of my family. We are asking the Board to reconsider and reverse its decision to fly the Black Lives Matter flag during the month of February and to cancel the February 1st, 2019 BLM assemblies at South Burlington School District schools. BLM is a political organization that takes stands on controversial public political issues, which of course it has every right to do. In fact, several hundred thousand American men, women and, men and women have given their blood, limbs, and lives to protect the right of BLM to express those views. We understand that you personally may support many or all of the BLM positions, but it's not appropriate for the Board on behalf of the entire district and all its students, parents, teachers, and all the taxpayers that financially support it to endorse, or for that matter condemn, political organizations like BLM. The district should not fly the flag of any political organization, whether it's the flag of the Republican Party, the Democratic Party, the Libertarian Party, the Green Party, which is a BLM partner, the National Rifle Association, Planned Parenthood, or any other political organization. According to its platform, BLM seeks to intervene in the current political climate and assert its own clear vision and agenda, which is to bring about a complete transformation of the current systems. Its agenda opposes global capitalism, these are its terms, and supports reproductive justice, criminalizing possession, decriminalizing possession and sale of all drugs, no matter the quantity, and reparations, which would include payments by those whose ancestors were not even in this country during slavery, and Jim Crow, and to bazillionaires like LeBron James, Beyonce, and Oprah Winfrey, and to millions of middle-class and upper-class black Americans who have benefited from the current untransformed system. By flying the BLM flag, you have decided that the district, all its students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers who financially support it endorse abortion at all times and in all circumstances, decriminalization of all drugs, and abolition of private property, private ownership of property. Even if you support those positions, as a Board member, your job is to administer the schools and make available an excellent education for the district's students, not to advocate for political stands which you personally, or some segment of the district community, support. By flying the BLM flag, you represent BLM's political views as those of all students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers who financially support this district. Even if some or most of these individuals agree with those views or generally support BLM, that is plainly wrong. BLM's platform takes stands on a myriad of political issues, too numerous to discuss here. Just to take one example, BLM fights the expanding number of anti-BDS, meaning boycott, divest, and sanction bills, being passed in states around the country, which it asserts harms the movement to end the Israeli occupation of Palestine. That's a quote, "harm the movement to end the Israeli occupation of Palestine." The BLM flag therefore represents the view that the state of Israel occupies an area that it calls Palestine, that the alleged occupation should be ended, and that the state of Israel should be boycotted, divested, and sanctioned. It is not the district's place to weigh in on this issue of international politics and policy, or to condemn the state of Israel or its policies. That is not to say that many, perhaps even a majority, of district citizens believe that the state of Israel, quote-unquote, "occupies" an area BLM calls Palestine, support BDS as a means of delegitimizing and destabilizing the state of Israel, and oppose ties between the US, US citizens or organizations of any origin, and the state of Israel. No one suggests that individual district students, Board members, parents, teachers, or taxpayers may, at appropriate times, places, and manners, express efforts to delegitimize or destabilize Israel. All right, excuse me. No one suggests that individual district students, individual Board members, parents, teachers, or taxpayers may not, at appropriate times, places, and manners, express their support for BLM's numerous political positions, including its views on the state of Israel and its efforts to delegitimize or destabilize it. They may also fly the BLM flag at their homes, display BLM stickers on their cars, hold peaceful rallies against the state of Israel, refrain from purchasing products and services with a connection to the state of Israel, persuade their friends or families to do the same, or financially support BLM or its anti-Israel allies. Should the Board, on behalf of all of its students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers, support BLM's condemnation of the state of Israel and endorse BDS? If not, it should not be flying the BLM flag. At least as of right now, I'm not asking the Board to fly the Israeli flag, but I'm requesting with all due respect that you do not fly the BLM flag, which represents a condemnation of the state of Israel, the only liberal democracy in the Middle East, the only country in the Middle East that respects the rule of law and minority rights, the world's only safe haven for Jews who have been persecuted from time immemorial in every country they've lived in. Right now persecuted European and Middle Eastern Jews are fleeing to Israel. That BLM singles out the state of Israel when there are dozens of tyrannical governments, and I can just name just a few, Turkey, Pakistan, the Islamic Republic of Iran, Saudi Arabia, the People's Republic of China, Cuba, North Korea, Venezuela, Russia, Syria, or just a few of those governments throughout the world, can only be explained by antisemitism. As Jews, we really don't care that BLM or any other individual or group holds antisemitic views. It's not illegal to be antisemitic, as long as it does not act on those views with force or violence. We do not care that the school district that is support, we do care that the school district that is supported by our taxes and that our child is required to attend flies the flag of this antisemitic organization. If the school district is for everyone, including Jews, it cannot fly the BLM flag and cannot have an assembly at which BLM's views are presented. BLM not only advocates for stands on controversial political issues, it also calls for violence against certain groups, especially law enforcement officers. Its demonstrations have been marked by BLM protesters chanting, "Pigs in a blanket fry 'em like bacon." If you're not aware of what that means, "pigs" is a derogatory term referring to police officers, and "pigs in a blanket" is a double entendre, referring to small sausages wrapped in bacon or pastry, which must of course be cooked, and to police officers in body bags. If that subtlety escapes you, BLM protesters have also engaged in the catchy chant, "What do we want? Dead cops. When do we want them? Now." BLM also glorifies convicted murderers of police officers like Joanna Chesimard and Wesley Clark. BLM and its supporters have a right to express their message, even in support of past and future violence against law enforcement officers and others. However, words do matter. According to an FBI report, BLM and its supporters have inspired actual violence against law enforcement officers, leading to a spike of attacks such as the assassinations of two New York City officers, three Baton Rouge officers, five Dallas officers, a San Antonio detective, and a Kentucky State trooper, among others. To my knowledge, BLM has not denounced these sickening atrocities. If you have any empathy for these innocent public service servants, including Daniel Faulkner and Werner Forster, Clark's and Chesimard victims, and their families, you would reverse your decision to fly the BLM flag and to hold a BLM assembly. The anti-police rhetoric of BLM and their sympathizers has resulted in what's called the Ferguson effect, leading to more crime in Baltimore, Chicago, and many other large cities, as police officers become more reluctant to patrol minority neighborhoods. Does the Board, on behalf of the district and all its students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers financially supporting it, endorse BLM's support of cop killers, calls for further violence against police officers, and the resulting actual violence against them, and the rising crime resulting from the withdrawal of police officers from the area where they are most needed? If not, it should not fly the BLM flag. BLM is based on the myth of rampant unjustified police violence against innocent and unarmed blacks, which has no anecdotal or statistical support. Without going into the facts of the most notorious cases, which in my humble opinion exonerate the individuals involved, suffice it to say that a jury acquitted George Zimmerman, who by the way was not a law enforcement officer, but is in the pantheon of BLM, in the death of Trayvon Martin. A grand jury refused to indict Ferguson officer Darren Wilson for the death of Michael Brown, a decision which was supported by the FBI's investigation of the matter. A grand jury refused to indict New York City officer Daniel Pantaleo for the death of Eric Garner, another decision which was supported by the FBI and US Attorney. While a Baltimore grand jury indicted several officers, and as the saying goes, you can indict a ham sandwich, in connection with the death of Freddie Gray, none of them were convicted. These deaths were tragic, though they're not, they weren't atrocities like the aforementioned assassinations of innocent officers. But unless one believes that these judges and juries and the entire American criminal justice system generally were either corrupt, entirely corrupt, and part of one big racial conspiracy, they were not the result of overzealous police officers violently acting on their racial prejudice. Does the Board, on behalf of the district and all its students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers financially supporting it, endorse BLM's conspiratorial view of corrupt judges, juries, and anti-black American justice? If not, it should not fly the BLM flag. Those are the anecdotes, the anecdotes. The statistics on police shootings belie BLM's entire raison d'etre, that police are more likely to shoot non-whites. A Harvard study published, or Harvard study published a paper by the National Bureau of Economic Research concluded that after factoring in extenuating circumstances, police were no more likely to shoot non-whites than whites. Summarizing the study, Harvard's economics professor Roland G. Friar Jr. stated, "On the most extreme use of force officer-involved shooting, we find no racial differences in either the raw data or when contextual factors are taken into account." Undoubtedly, police do engage in wrongful acts, some of which may be racially motivated. One would have to be a fool to believe that of the hundreds of thousands of police officers in our country, none have negative racial attitudes, or that of the millions of police encounters, that police conduct is always perfect. But there is neither anecdotal nor statistical evidence of systematic unjustified police violence against minorities, or, really, more importantly, that such violence is condoned. Other facts further refute BLM's narrative. According to the Washington Post, the FBI, DOJ data, and DOJ data, law enforcement kills twice as many whites as blacks. Blacks are more likely to kill police officers than police officers are to kill blacks. Forty percent of cop killers are black. Black and Hispanic officers are more likely to fire a gun at blacks than white officers. In fact, the study conducted by University of Pennsylvania criminologist Greg Ridgway determined that black cops were 3.3 times more likely to fire a gun than other cops at a crime scene. You don't have to believe these statistics to understand that BLM is a political organization with a political perspective that, at a minimum, is subject to political controversy and that it is inappropriate for the Board acting on behalf of the district and all its students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers that financially support it to fly a flag representing these views, regardless of the Board members' individual personal views, or the views of individuals or segments of the South Burlington School District community who are BLM supporters and proponents of flying the BLM flag. If you do not desist from flying the BLM flag to show Jewish individuals in the community that the district does not seek to exclude Jews and does not condemn the state of Israel, you should, at a minimum, fly the flag of the state of Israel also, and conduct an assembly, middle and high school student attendance required, with a representative of the state of Israel government presenting its side of the quote-unquote "occupation" and BDS. Flags representing the right to life and law enforcement groups, among others, should also be displayed, and required assemblies conducted for individuals representing those groups. Maybe you could have the widows of Daniel Faulkner and Werner Forster, who were gunned down by Chesimard and Clark, speak at those assemblies and tell them, have them tell you what they think of BLM. This is a pernicious policy. I'm asking the Board to take action before this atrocity is done to our district, and I'm asking you tonight to pledge to take up this issue and have a vote to reverse that policy.
Thank you for bringing your concerns to the Board. Do you have a copy that you can leave with us?
I left you, well, you know, I actually sent this statement to every single one.
Does it match, does it match the email that we received?
For the most part. And I also brought some copies for the public and some extra copies for you. And in any event, you know, February is creeping up, and we've got this issue, you know, and I think it's really, it's another atrocity for the school board to actually approve this policy of flying the BLM flag and having a BLM assembly.
Well, thank you for bringing your concerns to us.
And I'd like the Board members' reactions.
We understand, listen, it's our turn, it's our turn, please, to respond. Okay?
Okay, and then I'll respond.
Okay. So, we thank you for coming, and we understand that you are very concerned about the decision, obviously, that the Board made to support the students in flying the Black Lives Matter flag.
Excuse me, to support the students?
Listen, 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 it's my turn to speak. To be flown at the South Burlington High School for the month of February, I'm sorry that you disagree with our decision. The issue did come to the Board as a request from the students.
From all the students?
From students. And the matter was placed on the Board's agenda. It was duly warned. The Board voted during a public meeting to display the flag during the month of February, and the public was free to raise any concerns that it had at the time. The Board concluded that it was in the best interest of the district and its students to fly the Black Lives Matter flag. And I'm sure that you can understand that not all of our decisions are popular with all of our constituents. However, we do our best to make the correct decisions, even when they are potentially controversial.
Okay. So, then, will you be flying the flag of the state of Israel, too, to show that you're not, you're not, you're not a Zionist and antisemitic?
That is not something that we have taken up yet.
Okay, well, I'm asking you if you will take it up.
You can expect, you can expect a response from us in the future. Tonight, we are here to focus on the budget. We have a lot of work to do before that gets passed. We thank you for bringing your concerns to us. You can expect a response from us in the future.
Can you explain to me what the reasons are for flying the, and were you aware that BLM was a political organization and that it takes political, and what's the basis for you supporting?
We have devoted 20 minutes, we have devoted 20 minutes, we have heard you.
I don't count the very many meetings, so, you know, I think you need to spread my 20 minutes among all of your, all of your meetings, which comes out to be just a few seconds per meeting.
I appreciate your opinion, but we do have an agenda tonight. We did come out on a day that was a snow day to try to get through this agenda so that we can pass our budget on time, which is important to the district.
And will you be taking a discussion up on this issue?
I can't promise what the response will be. You can expect a response from the Board at some point in the future.
And well before February 1st, so I can decide whether we can decide to take appropriate action.
We?
Yeah, well, I said I was here on behalf of my family and myself.
Okay.
We, Mr. Katz, I'm sorry, we really need to move on with the rest of our agenda. I have to leave it at that for tonight.
And I can't remember if you took any testimony from any Jewish organizations when you decided to take this, or any law enforcement organizations?
The meeting was warned.
You know Jerry Silverstein, right?
Alex, no, 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 we're not going to get into it tonight. We have heard, we have heard your concerns in detail. We have copies of them. We will respond to you appropriately in the future.
And when will that be?
I cannot give you a specific time.
Well, you know, that's unsatisfactory.
I'm sorry, but if you look to the section on our agenda at every meeting, public comments, we reserve the right to respond to the public in a variety of ways. One of them is to thank you for coming and to say that we will give you a response in the future. That is the best that I can do today.
And none of what I said, none of what I said upsets you at all, that you're supporting a political organization when you're not supporting any other political organization? I mean, I know you fly the flag of the United States, which some people think are wrong.
Mr. Katz, I'm sorry, we really need to move on.
I'm sorry, too.
I think we should take a short recess. Can I have a motion to take a short recess?
I make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are in recess. Last off, with any other comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda? No? Okay. So then, Agenda Item 3, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments, David, or anyone else?
No amendments again, no amendments.
Okay.
We can, we can deal with them as they come up.
And number four, any announcements?
Just again, let the Board know, we had school cancellation today, again, hard decision. Again, most of it was just on the snow and the concerns related to road, safe travel. And also, just to note that, right now, January 23rd is the proposed date for the Steering Committee meeting, January 23rd.
Twenty-third.
And I'll be sending that out. I'm still waiting for confirmation from the city, but January 23rd, it will be obviously the evening hour, probably either 6:00 or 7:00 on the 23rd for Steering Committee. This is where we share our respectable, our respected budgets.
So it's like 6:00 until January 23rd?
Yeah, I believe it's 6:00. You'll be safe at 6:00 for sure. Yep.
That's City Hall?
City Hall. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Agenda Item 5, executive limitations, policy monitoring. It's warned for action. It was continued from a couple of meetings previous.
So I know, Martin, you wanted time. I don't know if you've had time to look at it or not. I think there were some changes that were made following some comments from Elizabeth, and I think the rest of the Board seemed to be okay. That said, I think you were, you needed a little bit more time on that particular section. It's really.
I was fine, I was fine. I had additional time.
Yep.
Yeah, I thought it looked great.
So.
So, are we ready to take action on it, then? Let's go ahead and do that. So, executive limitations, monitoring report summary for 2.0, global executive constraint. The superintendent shall not allow any practice, activity, decision, or organizational circumstance that is unlawful, unsafe, imprudent, or in violation of commonly accepted educational and professional ethics and practices. The superintendent shall not fail to provide a continuous improvement process, including a complaint process. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance? Yes. Okay.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Agenda Item Number 6, announced tuition rates for fiscal year 2020, and this is warned for action.
So you have it by your place. I guess I'll let Amity or Gary just kind of walk you through it quickly and answer any questions you might have.
So, for 2020, we are recommending $15,320 per student for our secondary grades 7 through 12, and the elementary K6 rate of $14,888 per student. The secondary rate is an increase of 4.8% over last year, which is a total of $684 per student. We anticipate receiving 194 tuition students between the Grand Isle County and Georgia School District, 19 here at Tuttle, and about 175 at the high school. We don't typically, and haven't for a number of years, had any elementary students, but we have to announce a rate by law. So, we are following the expenses of the current proposed budget, and barring any real significant changes, this rate would not be adjusted much.
So that's where the 4.68% comes from?
It's the increase between last year and this year, and it's basically, yeah, like our budget increases, correct? Yes.
I have a quick question, which is, I've been confused in the past about how special education costs come into the district with students. So these are just the regular tuition rates, right?
Correct.
So what happens if there's a special education student that comes into the district? And has that changed, given the changes at the state level about how we're reimbursed for special education?
So, we have what we compute as a tuition rate called excess tuition. That doesn't have to be announced, but what that is, is based on our actual expenses and the number of students that are served. We come up with a rate that we bill those districts for those students. So, it includes the teachers, that their salaries and benefit costs, and any program expenses, and then you divide that by the number of students receiving services, and that's how we get that tuition rate.
At what point in the year is that decision typically?
It's built at the beginning of every school year, because we then know our staffing, and we know our students. So it's not until that current school year begins so that we know our true staff and true population to bill. And that does not have to be an announced rate, because it is on a current school, you know, you're not doing it based on your budget to help those sending districts that are, you know, paying the tuition rates.
Also, the schools that send, that have students that participate, that may be on IEPs, they also have staff, they remain the LEA of record to make sure that the services are being rendered appropriately here at our schools, so there's a share of that. So the students from Georgia or the islands, there's, you know, that, that exchange of, you know, service.
Okay.
So, and as Amity said, you know, the reason it's on, we have to do this by January 15th, our announced tuition rates, again, this is part of the whole budgeting process. This is a similar time that we brought it to you last year. So, we make that recommendation.
Does anyone else have any questions about the tuition rates?
How does this compare with some of the other schools that are receiving students?
I couldn't honestly tell you, because most of those districts haven't published their rates yet.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
So I honestly do not.
How about last year? Were we pretty?
From personal experience, I can tell you that it compares with Essex, $15,500 for this year.
Okay, so it's in the same ballpark? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. A little reconnaissance.
Even more.
Well, I'll move that we approve the announced tuition rates for fiscal year 2020 as set forth here, $15,320 per student for secondary grades, and $14,888 per student for elementary grades, K through 6.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Amity and Gary. I will move out of your way, so we can move on to Agenda Item Number 7, budget planning discussion.
So a lot of this, a lot of this you've seen, we're going to walk you through this again, and I think fair to say, open exchange of questions as we go through it. Our purpose of this is to give you a little bit more of an update from the last time, and know that on the 16th, we have to adopt the budget. We're right backed up to our obligation. So, what I, what we want to do is we'll kind of shift off a little bit here. We heard you last, last time, you wanted a little bit more detail, and we're going to, we're going to walk you through some of, some of that as well. Yeah, go ahead.
Were you going to distribute the level fund information and things like that separately from this?
Yeah, so is that by your place?
That, I think, is right by your seat. Sorry, we weren't sure how you wanted to do that, so.
These are just back and front, right?
Yeah, yeah, they're just four slides.
So when we last met, I don't remember. Asked a little bit about what a zero tax rate would be? And.
David?
So when we, when we first started the budget process, the guidance the board initially gave us was to provide us with a Level Fund budget. In other words, if you made no changes in your expenditures, a continuing service budget, if you maintained everything you had, all right, and then a, then a proposed budget. Dennis, thank you.
Yeah, let me read that. I'm interested in the budget.
Thank you.
And a proposed budget. Last meeting, you talked a little bit about what would be the, kind of the effects of a zero tax rate increase. So Level Fund budget was the $1.6 million. And it resulted in about 26 FTE reductions to be able to get there. And the continuing service budget obviously represented, I forget about how much that reduction was. Amity, do you remember? Amity?
I'm sorry.
Do you remember on the continuing service budget what that represented?
So the 4.2% expense increase was the continuing service budget with a tax rate increase of 2.65%. That rate is higher than what was presented when we presented the continuing services because there was an error found in the 2019 actual tax rate was reported incorrectly. So the 3.42% continuing service budget on page two of this short little handout represents the 2.65% tax rate increase, a $1.699 million increase or 3.42%. The revenues are, were still at the same level as a reduction of $746,154. And the per pupil expense was up $858. So that was what the continuing service was presented on December 19th.
So on page three, again, apologize for not getting to the right page initially. Page three was the Level Fund budget, which was the 21 FTEs and the 1.699 to get there. We identified and provided all of the administrators with how would they get there? We have not specifically named where those 21 FTEs would come, but they would in general come from some of those, what I would say, important, but not 100% mandated positions. Class sizes would likely, would have to increase. Multi, multi-age classrooms would likely have to occur. We would make some reductions in obviously some of our co-curricular programs. Obviously, ELL staffing for where it's not necessarily required. So it would be, it would be a significant change in the program that we currently offer. The tax rate to get to the, to get to the level, the zero increased tax rate, which is on page four, would require that we would have to reduce a little bit more, a reduction of 13 FTEs or the 1 million. And again, similarly, we would be approaching it from those non-mandated loosely, but important programs that currently provides opportunities for our students would get us there. So again, we wanted to start out.
Not good to do that, but yeah, no, that's useful, helpful information.
So moving on, unless there's other questions, again, Amity, Gary have pulled the information together. We've also had the opportunity, last night, we had the Budget Advisory Meeting, which was good. So Amity, Gary, we allowed the opportunity to seek feedback from them. Many of them had watched the previous board meeting and also attended the previous advisory meeting. So this also reflects some feedback from the Budget Advisory Committee as well. So we're going to walk you through it. And we expect that if there's comments and questions or directions from this meeting, it will be important for us then to prepare for the 16th. Okay, so right out of the gate, one of the things that we, we heard loud and clear was, you know, what does this budget provide? And so we want to be really clear about, again, kind of some, some highlighted areas. Provides our student with opportunities and programs that are essential for our students to be successful as they make those, those next steps. Continues to work on the areas that we've identified in our Continuous Improvement Plan, which we have to provide to the state, which we've been very diligent about, and it's very sequential to the work that we've been doing. Continue to develop a co-teaching model between our classroom teachers and special educators, which is part of what you've heard in this budget, obviously, some of the conversations with Joanne. It provides staff necessary to meet students with disabilities. And this is our triple E program that we talked about again last time. Professional Development, again, we worked hard in this community, has supported us around late starts and early releases, but we put a lot of work and energy into sequence, sequencing the professional development and building on it. And we have some, again, really important work that we're doing around proficiency-based graduations, PLPs, our math literacy work as well. We continue to use our student assessment data and, and work to look at areas where those need to be deployed. Continue to work on, to improve teaching practices with instructional coaches. Again, this budget has some of those folks in there. Again, safeguarding our students through maintenance and facility upgrades, which most of you are aware of, some of the physical structures we've done, but we're also adding some staff. One safety officer, we added three last year, one additional, to really make sure that our, our learning spaces are spaces that teachers feel comfortable to teach and safe, and students feel safe as well. And then continue to add, you know, safety upgrades in addition to the staff in the physical buildings. Some of the outcomes, again, this could go on. It does primarily focus on the high school. But remember, in our ends, our ends is preparing our kids for next step. So we are, you know, ranked one of the, one of the top high schools, one of the top school districts in Vermont. And again, U.S. News and World Reports has that. Again, we don't want to play on that a ton, but that's currently where it is. We've been, we've been there. Also ranked as a high school. We presently offer supportive and accelerated honors programs, English, social studies, math, world languages, visual and performing arts and sciences. 80% of our students will continue. Again, that's a little bit up from last year and their, their education immediately following. Again, we're saying education's not always in, into college, but it may be in vocational technical programming or often to services as well. 70 juniors and seniors participate in our dual enrollment program. So they may be taking a corset, champlain, or UVM. Again, there's a good track record there for us in that area. Again, we're one of the few that has a school within a school, which is big picture, which is a unique way for students who want a different approach to their, to their, their education. Standardized test scores across are, you know, certainly ranked in the top in the state. Again, we're not complacent, but they, that's where we have been. 67 students have enrolled in our, in the VTVLC, which is our online learning collaborative. We have teachers that teach it as well, but we have students that also participate. And then we have AP courses, as you can see, we have students that are enrolled in. Good number of our, our students do, do this. I've spoke to you many times about, most of our students choose not to just take the easy course load as they progress, juniors and seniors. Most of them are here for the entire day, morning to the afternoon, right into the last classes. And then our college level math, AP, and calculus program. So again, quick overview of some of the things that you get as a result of, kind of our past budget and what this budget hopes to continue to provide. So this is what we presented, again, Amity, Gary presented back in, on the first. A couple of quick things, and again, I'll just point, 4.75 is where we were at before. Kind of these highlighted areas are the ones that are most, you know, most prevalent. I think overall expenditure, 4.75, our revenue hasn't changed. We lost that revenue, that remains constant. Pretty big hit on the percentage, 6.19. Our tax rate increase on this proposal was 4.65. Again, we had a CLA that came down just a tad. We had equalized pupils, which are a major calculator. We saw a change in 10. And then what we're going to show you next here is for tonight. And I'm going to let Gary get into some of the details, I'll do the quick highlight. We've made some additional changes. We brought this down to 4.15 with some additional reductions. Again, the revenue doesn't change. The equalized pupils, however, does change. We, today, actually, Gary, Amity and I, we got an update from Brad James. So now that's come up just a little bit more at 18.23. Now, so 4.15, tax rate of 3.58. The CLA, again, does not change. Effects on a $100,000 value at 55, 128 on the average condo, 186 on the home. Over here is the income sensitivity factors. So again, what a tax on a $40,000 household income would be, 60, 80, et cetera. These, these were the 19 factors. And these are the changes that would result from the previous year at that change. Let me pause. Any questions related to this before we dig in a little bit more? Great, thanks.
Just a quick one, David.
Yeah.
Is, is the equalized pupils count that has been updated on as of today? Is that what the Education Department or agency calls the frozen equalized pupils? Or are we not there yet?
I don't, I don't know. I don't believe it's frozen yet. I think frozen means that it's firm. And we have not, this is still not firm. That's another iteration. There is many districts that are, you know, concerned about the change in their equalize. Again, superintendents, certainly I know around the, up and down the Champlain Valley, have questioned some of the, you know, the change.
Yep.
And they're wanting to see how that calculated.
Okay, thank you.
We didn't really rehearse exactly who was going to say what. So I'm, I'm going to take all the time if I don't want to.
Amity kind of had an important family event to attend.
Oh.
We'll do the best we can here. So the highlights of, of the adjusted budget, this version of the budget that brought us down to an increase of 4.15% from 4.65%, maintains our classroom staffing levels at the level that they were in FY19. The overall expenditure budget is up $2,060,000 from 19. That's about $300,000 less than the previous version. Much of that expense results from the existing obligations, not associated with any additions to programming, which is kind of key. Of, of that, the increase of expense, just over $1 million is in benefit and salary contingencies for the three collective bargaining groups. That equates to 1.97% of the 4.15% increase. Just over half a million or 1.03% of the, of the increase were due to tuition agreements already in place, the 2019 bond principal payment, contracts with vendors for services already in place, vocational tuition expense increase, and our ongoing lease payment obligations. So the increase of 1.35, which we'll, we'll get to, we've got the, the same chart with the adjusted FTE count, accounted for 0.85 of 1%. And that is included as part of the recommended additions. That's just in case you go through and do all these percentages and add them up and get 0.85 more than you think we should have, that's because they're already included. Took us about a half an hour to figure out why it wasn't working. Our local revenue didn't change, down three quarters of a million dollars, primarily due to the Act 85 recapture that has cost us about $470,000 over the last two fiscal years, thereby reducing our fund balance and our, our typical, I think the term is undesignated fund balance, but typically called a carryover amount. And the administrative error that we briefed you on at our last meeting was 190,000 of that for FY19.
Next slide is just our staffing, again, similar to what you've seen before. There's been no change here. As Gary said, the staffing levels remain at where they were, where they are currently for, for 19. That said, you know that if there's a need in a different school, we, we obviously have the right of, of, of placement and we can move some staff around if we need to. Again, we feel like we're appropriately staffed, and if there's an influx, we can appropriately move them. So again, this is based on our demographic data, which continues to get sharpened. But here's where we are with, with our, our enrollments and our staffing levels.
I apologize. Can we go back one slide? The $468,817, how does that divide up between the two years? Because, because that would not, only part of that accounts for the 746, right?
Yeah, yes, only part of that counts for the 746.
And how much approximately is that a figure?
I think it was 185 for FY19, but you can't quote me exactly on that, but that's a pretty close estimate.
Yeah, because, so the other shortfall, I guess I'll call it, the other clawback result, is that going to affect next budget or to affect last year's budget?
Last year's budget primarily.
Okay.
But what I think, Amity, in writing this, when we talked about it, it's taken our fund balance from, you know, the $600,000 range down to, I think it was 160 for a fund balance at the end of FY.
So there's a residual impact for this year for the previous year as well?
Right.
Yeah, because the fund balance goes into our local revenue amount.
The following.
Yeah, and so if it's reduced, the whole amount really has reduced it year over year. So some years we add to that fund balance and some years we go down. But because the way the clawback was structured, it basically ate up what fund balance there was there that we could use for future.
And obviously, we, we weren't aware of what the clawback was going to be when we
Yeah.
originally, when we constructed the budget for 19, right?
Right.
19, yeah.
Right.
And that, and from an accounting standpoint, that undesigned revenue, our expended money from the previous year counts as revenue toward the following year's budget.
Right. I think I got that.
So again, enrollments, I think we can move on unless there's particular questions there. I think it's important for our community and you board to know that we've not made any reductions there. And our, our current levels of students are obviously at or above where they have been. So we feel pretty confident with what we have for staff. But I also want you to know that, you know, positively, we've got students, we've got a positive student trend here.
And in working, just as a caveat, in working with Dr. McGivern last week, it seems like the initial forecast was, was relatively accurate about a slight increase through 2026. We, we think that's going to play out pretty much like he predicted. Okay, and then we'll get to the recommended additions, which, which make up, I'll skip right to the bottom line, 1.38% of the 4.15% increase. Like we discussed at length last meeting, the, the triple E pre-K program at Rick Marcott. Joanne, you know, gave some pretty, pretty significant data in support of that, that addition to programs. The reduction in, in the payment for outside pre-K providers does have about a 50,000, and that's just an estimate because we can't know exactly how many. But we are estimating about $50,000 of a reduction in that expense. The reduction of nine FTE paraeducators and the addition of five FTE special education teachers at the, at the elementary program to get to that one special educator per grade level is about a $160,000 net increase, offset by a small reduction in FTE. And that accounted for about three tenths of the, of the 4.15% increase. A .5 FTE guidance counselor at the high school. Case loads are increasing there. Necessitated making two part-time positions, full-time positions at, at the high school level. Necessitated making two part-time positions, full-time positions at, at the high school level in guidance.
And I think that, again, just to hit on this one more time, given the needs, as Gary said, at the high school that we've heard, having part-time guidance counselors is difficult when that particular person isn't going to be there full-time, but on that particular afternoon of that day, your guidance counselor isn't there, that's part of the, the issues that we are seeing manifest themselves that are needing to be corrected, so.
That is certainly not exclusive to South Burlington, you know, and had a similar discussion in the, in the budget meeting last night. One FTE security position that, that will bring us at, at four to cover our five schools. We will, been working with the security lead to start brainstorming a cooper, cooperation, a rotation to cover the five schools augmented and with a collaborative approach with some administrative staff to, to be part of at least building access control.
That's not going to be easy, you know, but again, I'm confident we were initially asking for three, so this is one. And we're going to make it work, be, as Gary said, work with the, our safety officers and school resource officers to try to figure out a, a way to do that.
And I, I really have to say, I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't support it as the person responsible if we didn't have the quality of the first three that, that we hired, really tremendous assets.
I do want to just give a quick, quick, you know, shout out to both Amity and Gary. Again, with this sheet, we, we recognize both from the budget advisory and from you folks, when you start doing the ups and downs, what does it relate, how does it relate to the, to the overall percent? So I think it's, it's helpful for, for you and for the community to be able to do the adds and the subtractions to the 415 increase. So, thanks.
I know there's two sheets, but the type's really big, so it would project well, so just keep that in mind. An increase in .73 in the Office of Operations and Finance. Alex asked a pretty succinct question that I, I fumbled through, but I think I missed, I hit most of these last time. Just the, the increased state initiatives and the mandated requirements that are coming at us pretty fast. This year alone, this coming year, we've got the, the universal chart of accounts, new financial accounting, accounting, HR software, student information system, a new grants management system, and then the statewide longitudinal, longitudinal data system all coming. And to maintain the level of support we're providing, I would really think we need that.
Yeah, we, we've already, just as a quick anecdote, we had to comply with our new census data and into the SLDS database. And that, I mean, that took a significant amount of hours from our IT staff, business office folks to, to get that data into their system and to help correct errors that were there. So one example, that SLDS for the current census was an exorbitant. We asked all of our administrative assistants at the elementary to give up one and get subs in. And I think we did that for, for I think a solid, you know, five solid days. They weren't five in a row, but five days to help correct and make that database updated. So a significant amount of hours to get that done, and part of that was also the state not totally knowing where the errors were occurring or why. So we had to be really cognizant and patient to get that done. So, it would be, I think, nice if we can make clear to the Agency of Education and probably the education committees in the legislature that we've had to take on this additional cost because frankly, the agency education is understaffed and the rollout of the universal chart of accounts has been pretty miserable, and we've had to make up for that by spending money locally. And, and it'd be great if we could have the superintendent's association or business association gather that information and, and let the, the education committees and the agency of education understand the ramifications of understaffing, underfunding the agency of education. Because, I mean, this is, would you not agree that this is directly related to the fact that
Absolutely.
the rollout was, I was going to be non-political there for a second. The rollout was not as good as it should have been. Some of these other things are going on at the Agency of Education.
I mean, and part of this is a little bit of, of trying to be proactive, so we don't find ourselves inundated with, we've got then Gary or Amity or others that are unable to do some of the stuff that we need to do on a, on a daily basis because we've got to try to get there. So some of this is trying to be, what I'll say proactive, but it is reactive to these issues.
Yeah, it's not just the universal chart of accounts from what I understand. There's some problems coming from the state.
I think it's a good idea. We can definitely come up and, and share some specific things that we've had to do.
The next item is a .12 FTE assistant student mentor coordinator. Previously funded with outside organization funds and bringing that back into the, to the district. That's really about all I know. I didn't dig deep into this one, David, if you have more, something to add.
Really, it's our student mentor program. Like with all grants, you know, grants cover a lot, but over time, they're going to cut that back a little bit. Again, very, very successful program with pairing adult, caring adults with, with students. We've seen huge amounts of success for our students, primarily at, at the elementary, but also moving into the middle school as well.
So we heard pretty clearly from the Citizens Budget Advisory Group that there was real concern about our fund balance when we're, we're around a $50 million annual budget and, you know, having a a miniscule, you know, 100, $150,000 fund balance. They thought that, that was too much risk for an organization that, of the size. They recommended that we start with a minimum of a quarter million dollar operational contingency. We, because of the, you know, the pressures and the CLA reduction, we decided to try to reduce that. And we worked with David and reduced that to $100,000 left in this version of the budget.
Part, part of that rationale was the, the ability for the bonding. If the bonding happens, if, if you, if the board and the community decide to move forward with the next phase, then we can build into the bonding a repayment of the capital reserve fund of the $300,000. So instead of putting something in the budget that we don't really know whether it will happen or not, if it is decided, how will we get the, the money to help defer the cost, to get the cost, the cost of the project? Then the answer to that would be we can use the dollars out of the capital reserve fund.
Yep.
And then the bond, if the bond, when the bond passes, can replenish the, the capital reserve fund to the amount that was borrowed.
One question I have over on contingency is, there are no contingency teachers in here?
There is no.
There is not?
No, no.
Okay.
That's right. There was some conversation about whether I could make a reduction in one of, given one of the school kind of enrollment in one of the grades. We decided to keep it there. And with the right of assignments, we, we may, again, we're going to watch where that teacher may be moved or could be moved or stay. We also have a teacher that, you know, that the board granted years leave next year. So that also, again, that we, we have the, we have the position, but that may also help us around assigning that, that, that particular staff position.
The facility stewardship plan and really the maintenance budget overall is, is up .26% of the 4.15% increase, 134,000. You know, I heard, I heard clearly from the board that they would like to see some, you'd like to see some additional detail. So for your reading after the meeting, during the meeting, whatever you'd like to do, there's a, there's a breakout of a 10-year plan that, that Bart Micali and I worked through since the last meeting to, to give you some more, to give more fidelity and a little more detail. Just as a comment, as you look at that document, the high school, middle school is based primarily on Dorr and Whittier's work. Really, their, their capability is much greater than, than mine or any of our facility staff to, to estimate costs and to, especially the code portions, that's their real area of expertise. So that, the elementary schools are more of a, of a facilities maintenance type of budget without those code requirements that, that may come up. They are designed to keep the schools in as good a condition as, as possible. But I would recommend that in a future budget, in the not distant future, that we look at having those buildings assessed but by an architectural firm to get the same kind of picture that we have for the high school, middle school. Lease, lease purchase of two buses to stay with a, a lifecycle replacement plan that's contained in the stewardship plan. We need a minimum of two this year. So the overall total additions to the budget were 717,301 or 1.38%. The next two sheets are the revised FTE sheets. And page two, you've seen most of those. You've, you, just to remind you that we shifted many resources from individual schools to the district for special education. So the, the bottom line numbers are total change from the current, where we are today is a 1.1, 1.35% increase or 1.35 FTE increase, sorry. And the total change between the adopted budget in 19 and this budget is a minus half an FTE.
Yeah, I think, again, just to hit on what Gary said early for the listening public is that because of the way in which we are entering into the budget in the, the district, special educators, you see those, you'll see some changes, but you'll see those get picked back up in, under the district line. So that's an important piece. If somebody's looking at this, these particular sheets and wondering, you know, why such a drastic loss, you'll see the increase under the district line.
Missed it. All right. Okay, so this is the category breakdown for the, the budget worksheet. It does show the, the revenue amount and the percentages, and then the draw from the state education fund. Breaks down the expenditure categories into the, into some of the, the major items and then their percent impact on the four point, on the percent increase.
So what is the miscellaneous contingency and transfers?
Great question. I don't have that level of detail with me. I think it's in some of these pages coming up.
Okay. It's miscellaneous, in other words, lots of things.
Wow. So the contingency obviously contains the, the 100,000
Right, right.
that we put in there.
What about the transfer? Are we transferring some money to the nutrition fund or is that what that was?
We are.
Yeah.
$50,000 transfer.
And then the rest are the miscellaneous ones, okay.
We can give you some more detail on that too, with Amity not here.
She could grab that off.
No, that's fine.
What if the increase in purchased professional services relate to?
Let's see.
Is that, are purchased professional services things like Dorr and Whittier and, you know, other consultants and that kind of thing?
Yes, it's consulting. It's like our PM contracts, the professional services. It's, let's see, it's legal. Other categories were in there, David. Do you remember? We discussed this one earlier.
Would be the audit, the calling audit?
Yep, that's a professional service purchase.
Would be also the management of the pension fund or is that not?
SEIs.
SEI.
Yep, and future planning.
On the pages to follow, you'll get some additional detail and perhaps on some of the more specifics of the categories.
Yeah.
This was also in concert with what we heard from you at the last meeting to give a little bit more detail around where those changes are occurring.
The, the next several slides are, are the same slides you saw in the last presentation. The revenue piece has not changed.
Sorry for that.
So the extraordinary reimbursement on this next page, we talked about a lot. And that's to do with the change and how the state is funding our special education. What is this vocational tuition pass, flow through, yeah, the pass-through, and why is that going away?
Let's see.
I have just a few lines down. So under other state funds, it's about $150,000 that's going away from last year's budget to this year's budget on page 15.
I do not know. I'll have to get you an answer on that.
Okay.
Oh. I do know. 40,000 of that pass-through was counted as revenue and we can't, we can't count that as revenue under the accounting rules.
Okay.
That was part of the 190,000 dollar mistakes.
We counted it both as revenue and expense, right?
Okay.
Is that what, is that one of the examples?
Yes.
That we found.
Okay.
That's why, because the 40,000 of that was not supposed to be in that 55,000 the adopted 19 budget.
Okay.
This, this is a detail, I'm starting on page 17. With the dollar amounts, budget difference and percentage of change from the 19 to 20 budget.
What is our, the trend line as far as for subs? How we've been doing with subs? Because I know it's got to be a few years ago when we were
Looking at it.
Looking closely at that. I know it's not right here, but.
It's not. We could certainly give you a little update on, it's been volatile. We've had a couple of years that were slightly down and then we've had some up years. Part of that is just, you know, been related to a little bit of our change in our demographic of our teachers with younger families, so it's, it kind of has to go along. I mean, as I look at that over time, it's definitely been correlated to some of our change in staff. So yes, we can give you a little more on that.
So the specific question, Martin, so I can take it back, is it?
What the trend is.
Yeah, so sub, sub-cost over the, over the years, kind of as a trend line. Board several years ago just asked about, you know, that that was a trend line that was going up. What were we doing and, you know, what kind of programs, what kind of processes do we have in place?
Okay.
So my point, my point is, you know, we, we give, we'll give some more data. But part of that does evolve as we have either a more aging, could be population because you've got to care for a variety of things, or younger population as we've had retirees come with individuals with younger children that may have to be out, for example. So.
There's some concern as well as whether, whether it was, whether There's some concern as well as whether whether it was, whether leave was being abused. I don't think we ever found any.
Abuse, that's right.
Significant abuse at all, but that that was part of the concern.
Yep.
So I have a question on page seventeen. Purchased professional services, again, doesn't seem to get matches the one on the summary page.
It doesn't, because the the special education and the general fund is in this line, right?
Okay.
And then in the, in the other one's just general fund, because they're broken out in the revenues separately.
Okay, understood.
Good question.
Could we move on?
No, this is the, this is the line by line, I think, that you were asking for.
Yeah, I mean, it is, and I think what might make sense in the interest of time and just to last to digest it for a minute is maybe if we have any questions, to sort of send them to you before next week, because next week's really kind of it. But if we could, I don't know if we could all commit to by the end of the week, maybe getting things to you and Amity if there are specific ones.
Question-answer format that we've had.
Yeah, okay. Why don't we go ahead and move along then, because it's kind of hard to digest it and have all the answers in the meeting, so. Alex, did you have a question though, before we move on?
Well, I was going to say preschool expenditures going down, even though we have more preschool activity going on. I can wait for an answer on that or not, but I was going to bring it up just for conversation, since we're talking about preschool as a subject that is getting a lot of attention lately. If you guys want to get back to me, that's fine, but.
My thought, well, my thought of topic, I haven't correctly remembered. Five zero three four four, on page eighteen.
Yes, page eighteen.
So under purchased technical services, that, my question would be whether that is purchased preschool expenses, so expenses outbound from the district to other providers, which we would assume would go down this year if if we're adding a triple E program.
Okay. That's exactly what that is.
Okay, thank you. Makes sense.
So it's expenses paid outside.
Because we're going to have our own, we see that as a.
Gotcha.
Good question, very good question. Okay. Yeah, you guys have a lot of detail in here, so it would be great for us to sort of take this away and digest it and maybe get you some questions that can hopefully be wrapped up on the sixteenth.
Yes, maybe a kind of a top level conceptual sense of the board question, knowing I'm not the chair, it's not my privilege to do that, but I I remain a little concerned about the overall level of spending, not necessarily the validity of the new programs that have been proposed. And I had the help of the other paper article, which recapped our December nineteenth board meeting, where I think I had thrown out there that I thought a tax rate increase of no more than three percent would probably be a good barometer to hit, and we're a little bit above that. And so I guess the question, if I take page three of the handout you provided, which is, you know, how would we, how would we have to winnow to get to a a level funded budget? And so what you've done is identified, you know, four major areas where you could find 1.7 million of savings. And then page eleven, well, page ten, eleven, kind of enumerates all the costs of the the new programs. I guess the the framework I'd ask, you know, is is page three just a for instance? Or is that actually, if you were charged with finding 1.7 million, is that where you and I prioritized in deliberate sense would go?
It was a broad brush.
Okay, so it was just, it was more of a for instance than it was a.
Okay. It wasn't executed or talked in any great depth. It would just be where we would, where we would go.
Oh, yeah, but it is where you would go.
That's right.
Okay.
And know that it would have significant impact. So, you know, I had, I had, I had a similar objective and goal is to try to be coming in with overall expenditures under three. But at the same time, I also did not anticipate some of the, you know, the increases that are currently in there. As we broke down, there of the four, you know, you're close to three on things that I would say are not necessarily in direct control. We've got probably a one, a little more than a percent, 1 percent. We're trying to do some things to to sustain the district and move forward. And we've redistributed some of our our resources, but nonetheless, we're about a 1 percent. So again, I think I want to, I want to acknowledge and listen. So if that's a direction of the board to get it.
Well, actually, because then there's the moral hazard. I'm not going to be here if this gets voted down, so that's why I ask a sense of the board. It's like, you guys want to go at risk, you know, I'll support you, but it's up to you to then come with iteration number two. And maybe that's a good, I mean, you know, candidly, that may be a good strategy. If the public is willing to support this, so be it, and you won't know unless you test the market, as it were. But I just, you know, I mean, I'm not, I'm not coming at it with anything other than a sense that it's a little steep.
So, yep, I, again, I don't want to interrupt.
No, no. Yeah, well, let me throw something out as well, is that, I mean, generally, I want to present a budget that we've trimmed where we can, we've been efficient where we can, but we are offering the programming that the community expects. And where we end up with the, ultimately with the tax rate, yeah, that's certainly important. It's a little higher than I'd like to see, but, but, you know, I've seen the trimming and even a couple of things I wish we weren't trimming, but I'm fine to go along with it. But I don't want to really get to the point where we're kind of cutting the programming that the community expects. So that's kind of one part. The other part is that that we are, in fact, making up for some unfortunate decisions at the state level, such as the fact that we haven't had the revenue carryover because of the clawback, which was silly. And and the issue that I raised earlier about extra money we're having to spend. So that's also in the balance as I'm looking at this, but.
Yeah, I, I, I absolutely hear you. We're going to, when we get to a couple more slides, twenty six, we're going to look at our overall, some overall history, which was also what was requested of us from the last meeting, from both you and also the advisory, to take a look at what is, what is our five and 10-year tax rate history, and how does that look, so.
Well, in the way I look at that, you know, very, to skip to the end, it's like if you look at the the fifty one and change proposal versus the forty million from nine years ago, compound annual growth rate of 2.8 percent. That's darn close to inflation, and that doesn't give me any pause. But I don't think that's generally what the community is looking at. I actually am comfortable, I mean, if the rest of, first of all, you've given us your professional recommendation. If the rest of the board is comfortable with the, you know, potentially heightened risk that this won't get approved, but there is kind, at some level, there is no other way to test the sentiment of the the public at large. I mean, I'm fine with that. It's going to be your work. So I I wouldn't ask, you know, David and Greg to go back and and redo anything if if the rest of the members are comfortable, so.
So these next pages may help, help with some of your questions. This is, these are explanations of general fund expenses that that had, I think, the guidance that Elizabeth gave was a twenty five thousand dollar item that changed more than 5 percent.
Does that explain whether it's up or down 5 percent, or are these all 5 percent increases?
Well, it's either, it says either added or reduced, so you can, I think you can.
Oh, I see.
In the explanations, I believe it does it fairly well with increase or.
So the explanations do, I mean, they'll designate. I wish I could say that most of them say reduce, but they they don't.
So again, part of this is though us, I think sometimes what we heard from the budget advisory is, I think the mindset is sometimes it's all, we're always in an add, you know, in addition and never reexamining kind of our current services. And so I think there's some examples like our support, our pair of professionals, you know, we're trying to do some things differently. It's not, it's not easy to be talking about this when we have folks that have been with us a long time when you're making nine reductions. So I do want to say that we're trying to think, you know, broadly and and reorganize ourselves in a way that best meets the children's needs, but it's not always just to add, 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 so.
Yeah, and on that note, I just wanted to sort of build on something Steve was saying last time, which is, I, overall, I mean, I think you guys have done a great job of, of, things are presented very clearly this year. Things are clearly very well thought out. You've worked really hard to trim where you can trim, and and overall, I have no complaint. One thing that Steve brought up last time, though, is that some of these things that were asked to provide resources for each year and more and more resources, it's hard to understand how those programs are doing specifically. And it would just be great if we had some way of monitoring them, just to say, you know, is this program working? Is this additional funding, is this pilot program, you know, for instance, working? And if so, what tells you as a professional that it's working, you know, for the person who's, you know, responsible for it? What tells you that this is successful and we shouldn't perhaps be doing it a different way? That's what I'm struggling with a little bit, because it it does feel like we we add to the budget, and then it's, it's hard to really tie results to that funding. And I know that's, it's tricky. It's, it's qualitative in a lot of ways. But it would be nice to know what the thinking is at the administrative level about how some things doing and and why you're coming to conclusions, or Joanne, or, you know, Mike, or anybody are coming to conclusions that certain programs that we've put more resources toward are working. That would be really helpful in understanding it.
Fair.
A little better. And I know it's, it's a little bit late in the budget season for that, for this particular go around, but that's maybe a discussion, a broader discussion we need to have as we sort of talk, not just about sort of ends monitoring, but also some of these initiatives that are, that are going on, sort of monitoring. And again, I don't want to be onerous or, you know, add costs and and all of that to to put that in place, but just to kind of understand a little bit better what the thinking is and and how you guys think it's going would be helpful.
Fair.
So so I assume, Bridget, that you're talking about previous initiatives, because in.
So, yes, so for example, a pilot program to do trauma-informed classrooms. You know, there was sort of a pilot program that was presented in the budget. I think, was it just last cycle, David, or was that, did that start two cycles ago? I think it started two cycles ago. And so, you know, we've kind of been expanding that, but my question is sort of, are we seeing a decrease in incidence of, you know, kids acting out? Or are, you know, what are the, how are we sort of determining that that pilot program is working and that it is having the intended effect? Is it, you know, I'm just, I just don't have a sense of of how it's going. I've been told that it's going well, but but not much more than that. And so that's a little bit tricky, because that's where some of the FTE adds start to to come in or sort of the additional funds. There aren't big adds in this budget, but last year there were. And so sort of adding money to the budget each year for specific things, and then not sort of understanding what the outcomes of those have been is a little, is challenging.
Yep, fair.
Because for this budget, it's really the initiative piece is really only the triple E and the and the special ed change.
Yeah.
Gary, you're going to have to put your password back in, I think.
Yep, I sure will.
It's gone to sleep. So that was twenty one. Again, I don't know if there's any particular highlighted area, but I think, as you said earlier, if there's specific questions you have to target, those would be great.
This is great. This is really clear to break down anything over a certain size for us to sort of help understand.
Page twenty two, kind of continues, again, you've heard some of these things, so not to.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
That's helpful.
Yep. Page twenty three, again, just kind of concludes with the.
This is great. I like page twenty four and twenty five.
Yeah.
Included that before, but it's the first time that it's sort of.
This is actually Gary's work around just trying to break down that complicated budget worksheet sheet and show the expenditures and give a little bit of the math that gets you to it in in simple words, so.
Yeah, I already told you offline, but I'll say on camera, again, thank you for that, because in past years, it's been a scramble during budget season to try to answer constituents' emails about why the tax rate looks like it does versus what the increase in spending is. And this is really helpful to have out there.
Certainly for the community that doesn't see it all the time, this really helps, so I think you're agreed. Okay. It's good. Page twenty six is the page that we referred to earlier, kind of looking at the, kind of the trend data. Both in the middle, it tracks our proposed spending increase, increase. And then it, you can see the five-year average at three one seven, the 10-year average at 2.20. The tax rate change, and you can see the respectful, respected both five and 10-year average. We have, as you know, some of you have been around for a bit, we've had some ups and downs and a variety of things. Just because your budget increases doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, or increase slightly means that the tax rate's going to increase. There's a lot of variables that go into that from what we just talked about. But again, I think this, this was also a requested slide, I think from board and advisory to 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 give the detail. And we've been a district, so when you look at this, you can kind of say you're at a doll, you know, one six zero six zero. You're very close to where you may, you know, you can say back in 2015, for instance.
Right, yeah, I was going to point that out, that the, where this proposed tax rate is below 2015's tax rate. And there were some years where we dipped down partly because of one-time money and other things that were used to keep that tax rate lower in those years, but.
But I think the the point being is, if you're a homeowner, the taxation, you know, on your, on, on you, obviously, I want to say we're concerned, and we're trying to keep that, you know, in check. But at the same time, we want to highlight that, you know, some of our our history here in the district for five and 10 years has been what I would say responsible, you know.
Scary thing is, I think I've been here for almost all these but one.
And then, again, just the budget recap, again, from the work that's that's been shared. And again, I think it's going to be important to give us some some more. But maintain, maintains the current programming, the classroom staffing. It is a 4.15 budget increase. That education spending, again, this is what we have to report on the ballot. Again, we've got a lot of work to do to explain, you know, what's happening within that. This is, again, a requirement. We have to put that there. The tax rate increases 3.58, again, we just saw that slide. And then before income sensitivity with the CLA, the residential tax rate on a 336 110 home, which we are saying is the average home cost would be a hundred and eighty-six dollar increase. We, we have not specifically gone back to the city and said, recalculate the 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 average home. We think it's actually appropriate to keep that pretty static, because we think that, you know, when you're comparing, we could change that to our favor or or not. And we're wanting to just let people know that you can look at your last year budget book or whatever, and you'll see that we use the same thing. Again, it's, that's a a marker, if you will. And the property yield and the equalized pupil counts are subject to change. We'd like to think that they're not, again, the last meeting I just had with superintendents, you know, a lot of them, and at least I can speak to the Champlain Valley, are like, we, we're, we haven't got anything. So they're, they're really struggling. So that's, that's the budget recap. And then, obviously, the last slide is to encourage people to plan on voting on March fifth. So again, just a visual reminder to mark your calendar or pick up, pick up an absentee ballot. And again, make that, make that known so you can have your voice heard.
And so then will we talk about budget communication at the next meeting already, or will that be the?
We probably can, you know, I think first and foremost is to make sure we're answering questions and direction, taking direction from you, the board, on what you'd like to have come back for the twentieth. Soon after the twentieth, we've got the twenty third, which I brought up as a, as a proposed steering committee meeting. You know, we're going to go, you know, at it with kind of our typical budget communication plan. We've, we've laid that out a little bit in the past. Some of you probably remember where, you know, we were, either had various meetings, PTO meetings, staff meetings.
Do you mean the sixteenth? I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
If we meet in a week.
Sixteenth?
Yeah.
Sixteenth is a week from today, yeah.
And then the twenty third.
Okay, I was about to ask the same question. I was trying to do.
Yeah, sorry. I just had to look my calendar and double check.
I've been locked on, trying to think, this is the, the next meeting is the twentieth, that's where it must have come from.
Yeah. Before we move off of the budget discussion, I mean, I guess one of the things that does concern me in here that might be too low, frankly, is the contingency. I'm a little worried about that, especially with no contingent teacher in there, because a contingent teacher, if it needed to happen for some reason, would eat up basically that entire contingency. Maybe a little bit would be left over. And so I, it would be, I mean, I could do the math, but it would be great to see just what it would look like with another hundred thousand dollars of contingency in there or something, just to give us a little bit. Yeah, and and we can talk about that more once we see what that looks like to see which which one.
If you're done with the presentation, I can tell you that before the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So typically, what we, so, yes, and typically, the way we've done this in the past, again, those that. And typically, the way we've done this in the past, again, um, those that have been, you've been here in the past, we've had our worksheet, it's been up.
Yeah.
And we have that, and we can have that ready to go. We'll just plug that number in for you.
Okay.
And, um, you can see it in or out, and then obviously you can make a decision on whether you wanna have that plus up or, or a reduction, or whatever, whatever you want.
Okay.
Couple of notes, the, in the explanations that purchased professional services is in there, explained, and we, we hit almost all of them except I didn't realize. Outplace services for special ed is part of that, purchased professional services, so that's fairly significant.
That's a big part of it, yes.
And the other, I don't wanna editorialize, and I don't know if it's important to you, but one of the things that I like to look at is, is surrounding districts and anecdotally, nobody's finalized anything yet, but I will say that I haven't talked to anyone lower than four point one five percent in their initial, in their, this stage of the presentations.
Four percent, four point five percent of budget increase or tax
Four, four point one five percent of the expenditure increase.
Okay.
And I think, again, not finalized, but a lot of the trends are, implications are similar to what we're having.
Those same factors that are
Yeah, same factors, as healthcare increase is obviously a pretty significant, uh, part of that is, is one. So I think we, I've definitely heard
Yeah.
Um, kind of preparation for the sixteenth.
My only other question is, um, just sort of where we are with the outline of the budget book, because that budget book always gets produced really quickly after the sixteenth, after we approve the budget. So I didn't know if we would have another chance to look at, even if it's still not filled in, but like the, sort of the outline of the budget book, again, if possible.
Yep, no problem. The administrators all know of, of our revised plan.
Yeah.
And I am behind in giving them kind of what was in there before and, and then asking them, although one's already done it without any of me providing the model. And I think, and so I think we'll be, we're, we'll be ready to do that and we can populate um, kind of our draft, you know, start putting the, the data. The last one that I did for you was, you know, I just had kind of pages in there and then had even written in what would go there, but we, we'll be able to start putting, completing that pretty quickly.
Excellent.
And we, we, obviously, we have to do it, cause we don't have a lot of time, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any comments from the public on budget planning?
On the legal services, how much of that is charged to negotiation? How much do you budget for that?
It, that, that would show up under the, the, the school board budget, there's a particular, there's an area for negotiations in there. And can I point you to that page?
I don't know if it's in this presentation, it was in, it had a specific detail board budget, um, a couple of meetings ago, I think.
Uh, I think it's in It's gonna be on school board, and it's gonna be in, so we'll have to get you that, I guess. I just was looking at it, and we did have an increase. We did, we did have an increase that for this coming, this proposed year, because negotiations have been remaining. I mean, we've had one-year contracts so that we, we have an increase in the expected legal services, again, for twenty. And I'm gonna say it's about four thousand dollar increase, something like that.
But, but in FY nineteen
We did too.
We, yeah, but we worked out a two-year contract, so I would expect in that, there would, there would be one year in where it was, would be lower.
Well, usually when we negotiate a contract, we usually are on a two or a three-year trend.
Yep.
And so what you'll often see is your legal services will, you know, prior to, and then during the three-year, you'll see it diminish and then, and then back up.
Yeah.
But I can, we can give you the
Yeah, I've left it in here now, but as I skim through it, I did note there was, it's like four, five thousand dollar increase in legal services that was in here. I think most of that increase is probably attributable to the fact that we're negotiating right now.
That's right.
But yeah, we could get more detail on that.
Mm-hmm.
One other question.
Sure.
Security, are your security people gonna be armed?
No.
No.
Nope, that's not, that's not the current plan.
Okay.
The safety officers, they're school safety officers, and, um, they are really the eyes and ears and, and the welcoming people to help determine and make sure that whoever's coming into our building is excited and happy to come in and visit and aren't, isn't gonna do harm. So there's a lot of the skills that are needed, but our double-door entries allow for that conversation to happen before they, they come in and, and, and have access. Um, if there is an escalated situation, then our, we have, um, school resource officers that are, we have four of them. One's pretty much dedicated to the high school pretty much all the time. The other one's over here, and then the other two go between, um, one's a supervisor, but the other goes between the elementary schools and teaches classes. And then patrol is out and available too, to help respond to that. So we, the answer to that is no one's armed. Our school, our, our school resource officers are armed, they're uniformed police officers, and they're, they are armed, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions from the public, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So I'm not gonna be here the sixteenth, I think I already told you. I, I think this looks great, I am in support of it, you know, for what it's worth. I won't be there to give you my vote, but I think you've done a great job with this, so.
Thank you, Martin.
And I'll look forward to
I do have the information that you asked about, if you'd like it.
You did, okay.
It's, um, to increase the contingency by one hundred thousand dollars, it's, um, goes from four point one five on the expenditure side to four point three five percent. Goes, goes from three point five eight to three point eight three on the tax rate, and that's four tenths of one cent.
So on the overall expenditure, four point three five?
Correct.
On the tax rate, goes from three point five eight to three point eight three?
Three point eight three.
Yeah. And, and we can prepare, we'll have that, we can have that ready and, and again, we'll also have that worksheet.
We can work on the worksheet when we're here next time.
That's right.
Okay. Great. Any other thoughts? Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.